We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council's Committee of the Whole to Order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Just before we start, we also have Councilmember Carrillo, so we'll get a vote for that afterwards.
Okay. Jen, are you on the line? Can you hear us?
I am.
Okay, great. Good to hear it from you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Malambe.
Present.
Councilmember Emig.
Here.
Councilmember Painter.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here.
And Jen, you're here, assuming we will need a motion, though, to permit Alderman Carrillo to participate virtually. She is away and is involved in her work.
I will make that motion.
Move. Whoa, that was fast. Okay, move by Alderman Black, second by Alderman Mathie. And does this require our voice vote?
It does.
Okay.
Councilmember Mathie.
Yep.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Malambe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Okay. Jen, you're good to go. Can you hear us still?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay, we'll go first. Do I have no public comment cards?
That is correct. There's no public comment.
In addition to my jaw dropping and hitting the floor, I think this is only the second time in nearly seven years. Okay. I think it is only the second time in seven years. It's too late. Serena, too late, dudette. Sorry. At this point, we have consideration in our consent agenda of the action to approve committee of the whole meeting minutes that I'm sure were riveting from October 21st, 2019, as requested by the City Clerk Department. Is there a motion or are there corrections?
I'll move.
Move by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Painter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if everyone had a vote. Councilmember Carrillo, how do you vote? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Okay, it's on now. I apologize. There are seven nays. There are no, excuse me, seven nays. Seven yays. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Eight considering Councilmember Carrillo.
Oh, eight. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. I stand corrected. And I probably will stand corrected again, as I have done for the, well, this is my seventh State of the City address, and as I say, I will try to be as succinct as possible. I think in a general sense, the city of Bloomington is in great shape. I think we are beginning this year in better shape than we began last year, and I think we're making progress for the future. That's at 500 feet. One of the things that, and I want to thank Nora for helping to remind me of all of the great things that has happened this year. There were many of them, I thought, oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. And we are, and I want to thank the council as well, as well as our no longer new city manager, Tim Gleason, especially at this point. Year ago, you were new. Not anymore. We've had certainly increased in national attention in terms of the energy and the movement in our community. We were rated number one by PennyGeeks.com. I don't know what PennyGeeks.com is, but I love them because they listed us as number one of top cities for recent college grads, and we were named one of the greenest cities by Insurify. And so those are just some things that we've done. Now, we do know that in the future, as we move forward, obviously, we've got lots of challenges ahead, and most of our challenges do involve capital projects. We do have O'Neill Pool that we need to worry about on the west side, on the east side, a fire station to improve 911 service and public safety, which is crucial to our citizens. We also are working on the, a new library, a new library, not a new library, but a library expansion in the central part of the city. So there are some major capital project challenges that we certainly have going forward. But in terms of the things that, the notable things that have happened over the last year, we did, of course, have, very early in the year, presentation of our comprehensive plan for the Parks and Recreation Department. And thanks to the leadership of Alderman Mathie, we had the establishment of a technology commission. We have had major changes and revisions to our zoning code, and we had an economic development department created, and so we have a economic development director, which is different and has more authority and responsibility than an economic development coordinator from the past. We've had an increased commitment to our roads and our streets through a tough vote on a four cent a gallon gas tax, but that is earmarked for our Bloomington streets. And we've had an increase in transportation along with that, and the establishment of BloomingtonStreets.com, and of course, later than the Capital Improvement Asphalt, excuse me, Capital Improvement Asphalt and Concrete Fund. We have a new permanent city clerk, as well as a new permanent deputy city manager, and we reorganized the city clerk's department to help increase efficiencies and modernization, and we certainly want to thank all the staff members involved in that. We then, as of May 1st, welcomed almost half of our city council as new. And I was, I asked Greg Kous just a few months ago, I said, when has that happened? And he did not recall offhand when really just about half the city council was new. So once again, welcome, but you're not new anymore. Okay. We did have an MOU memorandum of understanding through our economic development department with the old Mennonite or electrolux site as we move forward on that, a critical piece of property, not just on Main Street, but on Route 66. And we established the downtown cultural commission and the boundaries. BPD officially was accredited by the law enforcement agency this year. We entered into a public partnership agreement with, very, very important for the west side, the Boys and Girls Club from, at, on Sunnyside Park. And we began the process to create a community preservation plan. We, well, actually, in this case, Tim Gleason, our city manager, hired a new police chief who was whispering to Jim Carth even as we speak, and is not even hearing me call attention to him, but that's okay. We also began our smart cities discussion about smart cities for the future and what they may look like, and what the city, the 21st century city should look like. We had renamed the Pepsi Ice Center as Bloomington Ice Center and dedicate the Joe Olson Ice Ring in memorial. The Miller Park Zoo construction began underway, and we had the grand opening, of course, of Harmony Park, which now allows us, allows us to be much more inclusive in our parks and rec services to all members and children in our community. We had lots of new businesses develop within our community that were really, really important and critical, and this is by no means an exhaustive list, but obviously Anshu and Agave, the new Biaggi's location is to open in February, Rob Dobbs' Mystic Kitchen and Tasting Room, Soul Mama Iron Coyote Challenge Park, Texas Roadhouse, Vision Point Eye Center, Lulu's Grill, Glu Loo's Pizza, and more. So we certainly are seeing continued investment within our community from the private sector and continued attention nationally. The Washington Street Old High School, as some people call it, apartments are now nearing completion, and we welcomed new directors externally in our intergovernmental apartment, apartments, excuse me, partners with the Economic Development Council and the McLean County Regional Planning Commission. And we dealt with this terribly non-controversial issue called cannabis. And in spite of the fact that this was something that was dealt with at the state level, it was still obviously contentious, and we are cannabis-free in terms of making our decisions for 2020, at least in the short run. We may have, you know, still some other locational kinds of issues, but, but in terms of the broad policy issue of whether to opt in, opt out, and a couple of the zoning issues have been taken care of. So I think we can be proud, even if we don't all agree on every single thing that we've done. In fact, that would probably be unusual, given the wide range of things that we're doing in a community of nearly 80,000 people and in a community that hundreds of thousands of people trans, you know, are transported through each year. We want to make sure that as we move forward, we take full advantage of our assets, our community assets, like our downtown, and that's another thing, actually, that we, we don't say we managed to do, but we were certainly involved in it, and that is the preservation of State Farm, the State Farm building. But take advantage of Route 66 traffic and to try to promote economic development in a much more broader way and work with the city manager, deputy city manager, and Melissa, as we go forward, and obviously, our partners like the Convention Divisions Bureau and others. So I think, as I say, we're making great progress. We've got a really great team in place that I'm proud of and amazed with every day, and it makes my job easier, has reduced my stress level from whatever in the world it was off the charts a few years ago to probably, I don't want anyone to say it, zero, but, you know, near zero. So I do want to thank our staff. I want to thank the city council for all that you've done and the tough decisions that you've made, as we try to make Bloomington a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you very much. And I did, I came in under budget, believe it or not, Donna. I say, but Donna teased me the other day, this is an inside joke, when she says, can you say anything in 10 minutes? And I think Scott said, well, if he's on script, he can, he can be efficient. But that is true. For all the times I've blithered on, this is not one. I'm coming in under eight minutes. I'm finished. Any council comments? We have five minutes of council comments or perspectives, additional things maybe that I've missed. Councilmember Bowlin.
What's Mr. Village? It's an expanding theory.
Oh, yes, yes. They continue to do that. That's true. The major one was 17, but they continue to do that. That's right. That's a multi-year project. Thank you. Yes, it's multimillion.
And the VA clinic.
And, bad mayor. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, the VA clinic. Yeah, I mean, the one obviously is continuous, not that that's not important, but the other one was very definitely, you know, a very, very important thing that I was remiss in. But thank you, Councilmember Bowlin. Anything else? Okay.
Just, I just want to do a big thanks to the staff.
Jen, I'm sorry, Jen. Jen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a big thanks to our staff for making all those things possible.
All right. Thank you, Jen. Appreciate that very much. Is it nice and sunny and warm where you are?
No, I'm in Chicago.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I knew that. That's one of the reasons why I asked. But anyway. If there aren't any other comments, we can move right along to our present, excuse me, presentation of fiscal year 2021 preview, as requested by the finance department. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our city manager, Scott Raffman, for about a 15-minute presentation. Then we've got about a 10-minute council discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Scott, go ahead. Just quick comments. This is our first public discussion about the FY21 budget, and we'll have a handful of these before it comes before council for eventual approval. But one thing that I will also share is even though this is the first one that's dedicated to our next budget, FY21, really, we talk about the upcoming budget every single monthly finance director's meeting. You know, talk about where we're at relative to the current budget that we're in, and then also some of the forecasts, you know, and the projections for FY21. But this truly is the first one that's dedicated exclusively to the next budget. Scott?
Thank you. Yes, this is meant to be a very high level, kind of give a preliminary view of where we are, the status, whether or not we're encountering any material issues. So at this point in time, I'm glad to kind of continue the positive message that the mayor was putting forward. We're rolling into the 21 budget midpoint. Things are looking good. Revenues are mostly finalized at this point. That's kind of pending, you know, each month that we progress through, we're getting more and more information for the current year, so that gives us more information on the current trends. All of our trends are looking good. At this point, we're really kind of zeroing in on our expenses. We're going, the budget manager, myself, going back and forth with the departments, drilling into any variances that we take note of. You've heard me kind of go through this process before, but I'll, I'll take a minute to kind of explain it again, how we develop the budget. It's really kind of a ground up, you know, we start over every year, basically. The departments are encouraged to provide as much detail per line item into the budget as they can possibly provide. I use the IS maintenance account as an example. It's a $1.3 million account, all our maintenance contracts. There's 113 items that go into one account. So our budget system is capable of breaking it into detail and description level for a single account. So the budget manager, myself, you know, we do a variance review. We start at a high level. We're reviewing, you know, variances for the current budget ask versus the prior year's actual, so 2019's actual, versus the prior, the current year budget, so the 20 budget, and looking for any material changes or variances. And then we have a four-year average worksheet for every org. So orgs, like parks, we have park maintenance, we have rec, we have aquatics, we have the BCPA, so those are all different orgs. So we'll review all those orgs for variances that are kind of, that get our attention, and then we drill into this four-year average worksheet, look at the four-year average, and then we'll go to the departments and start asking questions. So that's, that's the kind of review we do. We do an account-by-account review. And then, you know, during the year, we're sitting down with all the departments, and we're reviewing their budget reports every month. The budget manager sits down every month, or they're getting their report, but typically, it's a sit-down, reviewing the variances. So we're really trying to keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on. General fund. So from a high level, currently, we're at $109 million total budget. Now that is flat over 20. One of the reasons being is in 20, we had a $775,000 capital project that was budgeted in the general fund because it was related to the BCPA and Creativity Center, where we had restricted fund balance related to the capital campaign they did a few years back. Typically, projects are performed in the capital improvement fund. So, and there's a transfer that goes over, but in 21, we don't have that $775,000 project. So that's a material reduction. And then down below, I'll get into some of the other ones, but we lowered, we increased our vacancy savings, which lowers our salary expense. So that's part of the reduction, or the, part of the reason we're staying flat with the 20 budget as well. Current surplus, around a half million dollars. Now that's before we allocate any of that surplus to cash for equipment or for additional capital projects. So the first thing we do when we're doing the budget process, after we've gotten all the information and ironed out with the departments, see what net savings hopefully, or reserve that we have surplus as opposed to deficit. And then we did, it's a determination of what to do with the surplus. Do we want to do additional capital projects? Do we want to do cash for equipment? Like last year was the first, first time, not the first time, but revisiting the process, you know, paying cash instead of putting it on the capital lease for equipment, try to wean ourselves off the financing of all of our equipment. Material notes. Revenues, major tax revenues, increase of 1.4 million over the 20 budget. You can see the material categories we've increased. What I wanted to highlight, not on the screen, is we have no increase related to cannabis. I mean, that was part of the memo that went forward, what, a month ago or so ago. We have somewhat of an increase related to the online retailers, local portion that's going to go into effect, January of 21. So right now, we're, we're collecting use tax from the state, so online retailers, because of the expansion of the online retail sales tax, we're getting those revenues coming into us from the state. It's kind of like a proportional, population-based sharing, all of it coming into the state, and then it gets allocated out. In 21, online retailers will have to start collecting local taxes as well. Not really sure what that's going to be looking like, but we've dialed up our sales tax a little bit from that. Telecom. Every month, I talk about the reduction, or how telecom is kind of going down, not kind of, it's going down and down and down. So we've reduced the telecom budget a half million dollars from 20. So that's, that's a large reduction, but even with that, we're $1.4 million in increases right now. Vacancy savings. So this is an expense-related item. Last year, we discussed this quite a bit. So we have very specific targets related to our public safety personnel. I mean, this is the majority of our vacancy savings that we realized in police and fire. Historically, over the last five, six years, we've had trouble fulfilling those ranks. So we, we're targeting that budget, we're putting in the budget, but what we know from historical averages that we're coming in under. So we've accounted for that in the budget. So instead of artificially inflating our expense and knowing that we're going to end up with a surplus at the end of the year because of that, we're incorporating that into the budget. And we've increased it because we've been averaging 1.75 to 2.3 million dollars a year. Salaring benefits expense, increase of 1.7 million dollars currently. Salaries went approximately 2 percent, benefits approximately 8 percent, and the benefits increase is mostly due to the IMRF rate increase. So they lowered their return assumptions, so that increased our rate. So that was a pretty significant increase. It was around 800,000. Now, the next line item I have on there in parentheses, legal department reorg. So salaries, the increase also includes the reorganization of the legal department, which added approximately $450,000 in salaries, salaries and benefits. But the reorg also saved the city approximately $250,000 because it's lowered our contractuals by 800 and $30,000. So we've lowered all the contracted services related to legal. Part of it went to salaries, but the remainder was savings to the city. And then the other things, we're really attacking the contractual category. It's, that's where our purchase services, consultants, things of that nature, that's been coming in under every year as well. So we're lowering that category as well. Real high-level view of capital improvements, more like from the standpoint of dollars available as opposed to highlighting specific projects, which will be the next phase of the budget. So the general fund, that's where the cash comes from for capital improvements, the basic capital improvements, let me say that, for fire, fire stations, facilities, facility improvements, parks, any of the new parks, improvements to the BCPA not related to what I just mentioned previously, that came from the capital campaign. General public works improvements. Right now, fortunately, we, we have a $1.5 million in fund balance. It's going to be rolling forward from 20. Final amount, if we, if we decide to use a half million of that surplus for capital improvements, we could have up to $2 million available for, for capital improvements. Asphalt and concrete. We have approximately $8.2 million projected for 21. As you can see in the second bullet, the annual revenues, ongoing revenues that we're projecting are the $4.7 million for the local motor fuel tax, that's the eight cents tax, plus $2.3 million from the home rule sales tax. That's typically $7 million going forward. This year in 20, it was the first year of our tax increase, so we did not budget the full 7 million. We just budgeted 5.8, which is projected to be spent. So we're going to have 1.2, the 7 million less the 5.8, 1.2 million dollars rolling into 21. So that's why we'll have 8.2 million dollars available for asphalt and concrete.
Sure, our citizens will be thrilled.
I hope so. The other funds, enterprise funds. Motor fuel tax, I'm not going to read through these. One thing I did want to comment on is some of these dollars are roll-forward dollars from 20. This is, this is a common occurrence in municipalities. You know, you budget a project, certain things that are out of our control, like third-party dealings that we have, for example, the state of Illinois, working through some larger product, projects in water, Illinois EPA, dealing with the railroad, et cetera, et cetera, can, can force a project to roll forward. So some of these dollars are not on top of what was budgeted for 20. Some of them are roll-forward. The arena fund, I wanted to highlight that one. All of our enterprise funds, except for the arena and golf, have money to cover their own capital improvements. Arena has a 1.1 million dollar requested capital project from our facilities manager related to the rooftop units, but it's requested, not funded, because that's, that's a subsidized fund. So of our half million dollars in surplus, et cetera, if we want to address this need, we'll have to find the dollars in the general fund for that. Total capital improvements for 21, 41.5 million. I wanted to highlight, in, for 20, the total was 40.1 million. So we're, we're right at that same level. Significant dollars are being rolled forward, but I wanted to highlight in 19, or excuse me, in 20, that was a 13.5 million dollar increase over 19. So that was a significant jump in the citywide budget when we went from 19 to 20. From 20 to 21, it's going to be relatively flat. A current projection is it's around 230 million, up from the 227. But we're not finalized on that, well, we're not finalized on any of the numbers, but that one's still moving. Some of the internal service funds, we're still working on. Those are the insurance funds and things of that type. So what are the next steps? First of all, we need to finalize our expense review. I've mentioned that. And once we, we kind of get that number for the general fund, you know, what do we have to work with for capital projects? Then we need to finalize the requested departmental capital improvement list. So in finance, we, we get kind of the wish list from all the departments related to parks improvements, pool design, et cetera. We ask them to prioritize those. Next steps would be presenting those to council, having them review them, and then finalizing what we want to go into 21 with, with the dollars that are available. And then, of course, you know, there's reviewing potential larger capital improvement projects that would need new funding. So you can kind of separate those between dollars we have available from the budget process and surplus, and then what we need to source for. And then just, just to highlight the remaining 21 budget schedule, the proposed budget presentation currently scheduled for February 24th. That's when, you know, we'll have a line item, the detailed budget, available online. I'm not sure if the books will be available, but it'll be on, it's available to the public. You know, that's our two-volume. It'll be ready. For my presentation, for the presentation here, though, we'll be highlighting, we'll be, I'll be focused on using a very similar presentation as last year. I kind of want to, kind of be repetitive in some of the materials that we're showing, so people get, the public gets used to the numbers and starts getting a handle on, you know, what are those material schedules we're looking at that, that really kind of indicate how the city's doing. You know, so we'll have the major revenues, the 20 budget versus the 21, and the percent increase. The general fund, you know, income and expense and all those line items, and what the percent increase is, and explanations as to what the changes were for, or from. And so kind of giving it that easier-to-grasp view of a $230 million budget, you know, with, I don't even remember now, 29 funds, et cetera, et cetera. The public hearing, then, required to have, March 9th, and then with the final budget adoption on April 13th, you know, which gives us one more council meeting at the end of April in case we need to bump. So from a high level, you know, the, the city... So, from a high level, you know, the city, it's a consistent message that has been given the last few months, you know, fortunately, the economy's doing well, the city's doing well. You know, major tax revenues have been trending positively, except for telecom, but, you know, you're going to have one. And, you know, the departments, to their credit, they really take being the steward of the public's funds very seriously, and so do we in the finance department, so, you know, we're going to make sure that we're doing every, providing all the services we can at the best price we can. So, any questions?
Questions, I'm Mr. Rastin. Councilmember Black, and then Craybill, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, and thank you Scott and Tim and staff for putting this together. I guess my first question would be, if we can go back to the slide where we talk about the motor fuel tax, I think we had, what, $8 million, where that was, 8.2 million? Jim, are we going to be able to do all that work, 8.2 million in a year? I know that in past years, we've talked about that there's a threshold that we can only do X amount of dollars of work per year because of the number of contractors, and I'm seeing you nod your head yes. Yeah, so it looks like, okay, so that would be different than years past, which is exciting. So, yeah, I'm excited about that. My note will be, when it comes to capital improvement projects, O'Neill Pool, top of my list, it's time, that, you know, I think we're over 20 years above and beyond the useful life of that pool. You know, we can debate whether or not we can make it an aquatic center or not, but I think we need to see in the budget a plan for it. I'd like it to be a wave pool, that seems to have very little traction, but, you know, minds can change. But the neighbors out there, I remember I attended a Parks and Rec Citizens Engagement Forum a couple of years ago, they want to see something there, they want to see concession stand if it can turn into a dog park, I think that speaks to another deed in the community, and I think the time is now, especially coupled with, you know, this council's desire to see public safety as a top priority. Eastside Fire Station improving response times to an area that needs that type of response. So, from where I see it, it's a win-win, you know, we answer a project that has long lingered, much further past its shelf life than it should have, and also addressing a critical safety issue. So, I look forward to seeing it, maybe if it's a, you know, an aquatic center versus, you know, a like-for-like, you know, numbers, even some rough outline, it's time.
Can I jump in, or get on stack?
You can, we'll come back. I was just to say, I absolutely agree with Alderman Black, but I did call on Alderman Craybill, and then I'll get to you, Jen, okay? It's on, we can continue the discussion, okay?
Sounds good, I just wanted to agree with him, that was it.
Oh, okay, well, if you got other comments, you can save them for just a second. Councilmember Craybill.
I'll also agree with Scott with regard to the priorities of O'Neill Pool and an Eastside Fire Station. Just some questions, Scott. So, we have 1.7 million in vacancy savings, meaning positions that we have not filled with the city.
That's correct.
And we are including that, and we're not going to include that in the budget, meaning we're not going to expect to fill all those vacancies in the coming budget year.
That's right, that's the effect of including, it's like an offset to the total salaries budget line, so we recognize that we're going to be under in that. So, you know, example, if we didn't do that, we'd be 1.75 million, let's say we'd be 1.7 million dollars short.
Okay.
Then we'd have to start going through a process of, you know, eliminating services or cuts, or, so this acknowledges the fact that we have that cushion in the budget, but we're still also acknowledging that that is the target for those, for the public safety personnel requirements, I guess.
I was actually going to jump in real quick and comment to that. I guess if we know historically that, you know, even though we know what the projection is for 100% employment throughout all the departments, but if historically, we know that we're only at a 95% expenditure, we're carrying that 95% as the example into the FY '21 budget regarding replacement and some of the critical positions, I'm actually giving approval to over-hire so that we, we know that we've got a retirement coming up, or we've got an injury that might turn into a permanent disability. We're actually getting people in places as quick as we can to try to get some relief to the departments, and that's a new practice. But we're not holding refilling positions.
And is the, I guess going back to that first slide, where we, the current surplus is 550,000, is that based on the vacancy savings and the contractual decrease, or is that for 2021?
Well, that includes the vacancy savings and the contractual reduction.
So, if those go away, if we fill the positions and, you know, the contractuals appear to be a one-time thing, savings, right, with the switch over in legal, will that, will that in essence negate the surplus, and we could potentially be in negative territory?
I would say so with the vacancies, but the contractuals is, that's going to be an expense category that we control, that we're targeting that, and that, if that starts going over, we'll be looking for reductions in that category. The vacancies, you know, our target is to hire the people, but history's shown us that 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 number is actually probably lower than what our average is.
The slide showed 41.5 million in expected infrastructure improvements for 2021?
Yes.
How much, how much of that is a carryover from 2020?
I'd have to do some fast math, I could get that for you.
But I just wondered, like, how much did we get done from what we planned last year versus rolling in then? So, is it being optimistic we'll actually get 41.5 million in improvements done?
Well, the material roll-forwards were related, and I don't know if Jim wants to speak to this, were related to, like, as I mentioned, some third-party issues, so there was a lot of work that was accomplished for the year, but the, like, the motor fuel tax fund, the Fox Creek Road Bridge Project, I mean, that's rolling, and that's just due to negotiations that are taking longer than planned.
And I know, I know we talked last year during the buzzard cycle, not me, but, and watching it, we were working on developing a 20-year plan for capital improvement projects. Is that?
I, not, yeah, well, I'm not, I don't recall that specific discussion, and so we have not moved forward with anything like that yet.
If I may, I think there was a five-year plan, and we were looking at that.
Two years, five.
I don't know if there was.
I mean, there is a existing five-year plan, but it probably needs revisiting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Alderman Karia. Jen?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, you want to make your comments and any other questions?
Yeah, no, I seriously actually just wanted to say everything that Scott said. So, yes, write on on that, I think folks on the West Side deserve an investment, and I think we need to come correct with that this year. So, that's a big priority for me as well.
Yeah, thank you very much. Councilmember Mathie, and then Milowambe.
Thank you. Scott, thank you for everything you've been doing, the monthly updates have kept people way more informed than we have in the past, so I've heard from many people that they really appreciate them. One of the questions I got the other day, and I just wanted to ask in that, is, you know, we talk about, you got, the budget manager and yourself are reviewing variances and looking at four-year spending patterns and stuff like that to make sure that we're keeping as tight a finger on spending as we possibly can, and the question I always ask is, how do we tell that if somewhere in one of those, I don't know if it's department level budgets or not, that the variance is not changing, but there are things in there that, the spending for things that maybe we don't necessarily need anymore? It's been an ongoing spend, but it's not necessarily relevant to the department or the city moving forward. How are we looking at expenses to determine, is that still a relevant expense, or is there room to change that line item or things like that? Are you, is that some kind of negotiation or conversation you're having with the department heads to make sure that the expenses we're still, we're having are actually still relevant to the mission moving forward?
I'd say yes, I'm not sure I put it in those same terms. I mean, by having discussions with them every month and working through what activities they're working on, and, you know, where the dollars are actually being spent, and having, you know, that basis behind the dollar flow, I think we're getting the answer to that question. If we, if we see anything that we recognize as, I mean, I don't know if it's, you know, would be a personal perception, but that we recognize as being at odds with the current message or the focus that we're hearing here, you know, that's my job, and the budget manager's job to bring that up to the city manager during the budget process. I mean, we can't expect Tim to be able to review, you know, 4,000 lines of budget. So, that's kind of the thing that, it's my job, is to highlight and bring to his attention and things that maybe are policy issues of that nature, where we think dollars are being spent on a direction that the city council and the city manager haven't chosen to go in.
Okay, like, I just, I mentioned to the person asking that I would bring it up, and that's a great answer.
But.
And I also just wanted to, you know, you've been, pretty much every month since we started doing the monthly updates, telling us about the telecom fund, and the fact that we are, this year, we are going to dip into the reserve. The telecom fund was created to, and initially set up to have a fund balance, knowing that at some point in the future, we were going to need to start dipping into that fund balance, and from what you're telling us, this is the year we start dipping into that fund balance as, in terms of helping to make our pension payments for our police and fire. And I mentioned this to you in a meeting the other day, that I just, it's not necessarily relevant to our 2021 budget, but in 2021, some point, we need to address that and create a sustainable, a way to address our pension problems, not problems, our pension funding going forward, and I, we need to do that prior to getting to the 2022 budget, because you're telling us this budget's the year where we're going to start causing issues in there. It's not relevant to 2021, but it keeps coming up when you're talking about this budget that now we're dipping into that reserve, and, and we need to make sure we have a sustainable pension funding mechanism, and that's going to cause us to have to take action this year to get there. So, just, like, just a comment, it's something that's been top of mind for me for years, is trying to figure how do we create sustainable method of funding our pension system, so. But as always, thank you for all the work you do on this.
Quick additional comment, I'll piggyback off of Alderman Mathie's comments about public safety pension funding. You're spot on, obviously, we've talked about this in the past, but more so for the community. You know, another component is the consolidation of the public safety pension funds, Downstate Municipal. They have got a 24, and I heard today, potentially a 30-month transition plan on what this eventually is going to look like. So, I mean, that's nothing, you know, what you communicated was spot on, but there's an additional component that's, you know, that we have to deal with as well, and we're sort of a wait-and-see as far as that's concerned. So, just sharing that more so for the community.
Okay. We're well over our time budget, speaking of budgets, but I'm going to go ahead and call on the two, all the men and women that I see. Councilmember Milowambe and E-Megan, if we need to go further, we'll have to extend time.
Okay, sure, thank you. I'll just be brief. I wanted to, first of all, agree with Scott and others about O'Neill Pool, and also the Eastside Fire Station as much as possible. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was our street resurfacing, and I know that's probably not a question for you, but more for Jim. Hate to put you on the spot, but just kind of wanted to get a very quick idea of what that would look like this year in terms of when you're starting to review what streets to look at, and the rating system, and, because I, from what I understand, there was a little bit of a change, right, in how you're approaching that, so just kind of wanted to.
I'll take that one. The, what was promised to council last year was this discussion, a more public discussion about the street selection. We're finalizing what that product will look like, and that's going to be a discussion with council in the very near future, and then a public discussion on what the 2020 street projects look like.
Councilmember E-Megan.
Yes, thank you. I echo everybody's thanks for the very transparent way that you've guided us through the budget process. I was also going to ask about this mechanism for getting input, community and otherwise, for prioritizing the asphalt and concrete priorities, so I'm glad that that's coming soon. That's definitely a priority for me. I concur with the other capital improvement priorities. I want to comment that, for me, the library expansion is at the top of my list as well, because I think it's definitely time to create a more serviceable entity for our community, and I look forward to seeing how that develops. And finally, I did a quick review of other municipalities and found that many of them have a budget FAQ, such as from Kent, Washington, and I'm wondering if going forward, we can collect frequently asked questions as we move into the public hearing portion of this, we continue our conversations, we will get many questions from constituents. If we could pool these questions that were being asked and publish a response that we post, I think that would be really useful for the community to have access to. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea, just one of the things that I get most frequently throughout the community is, well, what is the difference between the capital and operating budget? What's the difference between your general fund and all of the enterprise funds? It's a few basic things, it doesn't necessarily have to be a drill down to all of the line items, but some of the frequently kind of asked questions that people can get a hold of, but I think it's a great idea. Anything else?
I got a quickie to that great comment. Well, actually, it may not be a question, you know, responding to every question, but I think we can weave some of those more common ones into the monthly finance director's report, so deliver it that way as well as responding, you know, on our website as well. That's a great idea.
Thank you, okay, at this point. Thank you so much, Scott. Thank you, Mr. Gleechen, and all the staff that have worked on this. Thank you. We move next to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, at that time of month. We have five new employees, and a couple of those faces are pretty familiar. We have Jeff Jurgens and Angela Fions are now city employees, so they had to be up on this slide even though we've had a relationship with them for the last six years. To the far right is Amy Overton, she's our new executive assistant. Amy, if you wouldn't mind standing up.
[applause]
Welcome aboard. And then Aaron White is a new police and fire telecommunicator, and Adam is also a new telecommunicator for police and fire. Thanks, Scott. Convenience center hours, we actually had some public input and some elected input, and with that, we have a staff recommendation for a change that went to effect today, so we're sharing this. Also signage at the convenience center, Nora sent out a press release, but wanted to take a couple of seconds here at the committee of the whole to share this. So, what has changed is we were open Monday through Friday, but now we're going to be open Tuesday through Saturday, adjusting the Wednesday hours to catch some of the evening for when people are off, and also being open on Saturday, a weekend time slot. So, it was a good suggestion from some public input, and then staff came up with this as well. The next item for me, there's not a slide for it, but just a reminder, February 1st, special meeting, going to be a legislative update, and that's Saturday morning. It's going to be at nine o'clock, last couple of hours, there's going to be light breakfast at 8:30 in the morning. And what we'll do with RSVP'd, all four of our elected, which are Senator Brady and Barickman, and then Representatives Brady and Summer, they've let us know that they're going to attend, and really, we're going to expand on the capital projects that they're already very aware of, but this is an inappropriate place to talk about those a little bit more in a public setting. And then the streets website, again, nothing new here, just wanted to remind everybody that we have this website that we created last year, and that we have this website that we created last year, and it's up to date, so the projects that we're doing, you know, the totals and the expenditures on locomotor fuel tax revenues, as we promised, it's on here, so just a, maybe not so gentle reminder that we have this information out there for the community. And then item number five, and the last item, is just putting on everybody's radar 2020 census, and we're planning a committee of the whole in February, just a presentation to, for some of the players that are involved within the city, but then also regionally, and this truly is an all-hands-on-deck moment for us as a region regarding this census. That's all I've got, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Sorry.
Please.
I have a quick question, the federal representatives won't be here?
We're working on that as well, but I know for sure I'm going to have the regional players and us as a city.
Usually we've, well, at least in the past, the legislative updates have been state, but, and we've done separate kinds of things with the feds, but it depends on their schedules, so.
You know something, I want to make sure, were we talking census, or were we talking the special meeting?
The special meeting.
I apologize.
Oh.
I had just invited the four state elected, I shifted, and I thought that you might have been asking about some sort of representative on the census, 2020 census, I apologize. No invitation to Congressmen Davis or LaHood, or either Senator, but I can work on that.
We don't seem to ever have an opportunity to talk to the feds, the federal representatives as a group, you know, the state reps are around, so it'd be kind of neat to do that.
I'll work on it, but it's not going to be, I would imagine, for February 1st, but we'll see if we can't get a placeholder for that sometime this calendar year.
Given the vicissitudes of the Washington schedule, they're not easy to get a hold of regardless of who they are a party, you know? At this point, we don't have an executive session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Move by all the woman painter, is there a second?
Second.
Second by all the woman, Emig, any further, oh, excuse me, I'm making more out of this. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. Stay warm.
Thanks, everybody.